Привет, ребята. Если кто-то может услышать меня, пожалуйста, скажите привет в групповом чате, который у нас есть в зуме. Хорошо, perfect. Микрофон работает, все работает. Хорошо, давайте начнем. Девушки и дамы, добро пожаловать на первый Солнечный саундсумит. Я сегодня ваш гост. Сегодня 1 марта, вступление в сторону сообщества самогoverning Sun и исторический момент для всей блокчейн истории. Каждый участник здесь сегодня присоединится к нам и увидит важный момент. Это持有者们, которые貢献了 growing Sun сообщество и делали блага от этого. Мы побуждены всему делиться своими идеями и предложениями, чтобы promote robust growth of the Sun talking. Это мое звание, что я провожу первый Солнечный саундсумит. Мы здесь сегодня, чтобы обменять идеи и строить связь как сообщество, чтобы сделать Sun лучше для всех. Я首先介绍一下今天的 agenda. 会有三个会议。我们会先从Sun的项目开始介绍。Sun是数字TRC20的交易 token，发行在Tron，总共供应了19.900.730 token。因为Bitcoin在Tron和Tron DeFi ecosystem的关键组成部分，Sun已经被很好的整合了，DeFi projects on the Tron public chain， 包括 decentralized lending, insurance, liquidity, and more Tron-powered services. 由于 decentralization，作为它的核心价值，Sun被 initiated and run by the community. 合作，我们使Sun Genesis mining取得了巨大的成功。在 September 16-26，提出了很多TRX stake，生产1.866,602 Sun。На 30 сентября, Sun started its official mining with a 20% output reduction and three new pools. На 14 октября, вторая уменьшение на 30% была передано, с добавлением шести новых pools。На 28 октября, mining rewards were cut further by 23% with six new pools。В дополнение, мы также провели первую кампанию за голосование, чтобы избрать новые pools на 15 октября。И на 1 ноября, мы провели вторую кампанию, чтобы让用户们 голосовали с Sun, чтобы проект был представлен на drop-down banner Just Swap。所以，大家好。前面我们开始之前，我想表达衷心的感谢所有Sun users， 对你们的贡献和支持，对我们的社区。所以这是规则。请不要超过这个限度。不使用负面或与毒品、性、暴力、racism等其他 controversial 的话题。整个 summit，整个时间，将是19分钟。19分钟。接下来我们将开启第一次会议。所以，今天所有在这里的人应该明白，现在 everything is recorded， 所以，想要发言的人，只需在 Zoom中按下举起手功能， 你的建议。所以，我们现在就可以开始了。如果你想发言，如果你想对我们说什么， 如果你想与社区分享一些想法，只需举起手，在 Zoom 上。我会关掉麦克风。好，我们有第一个。已经有人举起了手。我们将首先从第一个举手的人开始。是Mandy。你可以开始。
Привет, ребята. Меня зовут Mandy。Привет。Вы все здесь? Хорошо, прекрасно。Я подписчица Sun depuis начало всего этого, поэтому сегодня я хочу высказать свою opinion на mining Sun。Я верю, что мы должны остановить mining Sun, по три причинам。Первая: я верю, что оно заключается в продаже Sun。Для тех, кто продает Sun, не получают токены и не платят деньги, потому что mining, вы знаете, mining system。Поэтому неправильные инвесторы не продавают, потому что цена все еще ниже, чем когда они покупают Sun。И вторая причина: количество акций на самом деле больше не увеличивается, потому что мы следуем Sun социальным сетям。Мы видим, что Sun имеет достаточно количество exchanges。И последняя причина: если mining продолжается, большие quantities of Sun will be locked up。Поэтому, действительно, если на самом деле используется, очень сложно его реализовать на Sun。Это моя opinion。Спасибо, гость。
Хорошо, спасибо за вашу opinion。Да, мы определенно вернуем это回到 developers и团队，为讨论。Спасибо за то, что поделилась вашими мыслями, Mandy。
Хорошо。
Ребята, не стесняйтесь, если хотите высказаться，如果你想说什么，随时可以举起手。新的人加入到群聊。下一个人举起手的是 Julie。
Привет, ребята, я Julie。Я очень рад быть здесь。Я также давно подписчица Tron。Вы меня слышите?
Да, это perfect。
Я была решена участвовать, когда Justin объявил для первой разработки Tron mining token Sun。Делолось, что Sun действительно сделал хороший job since launching。Но, к сожалению, это сделал переход в развитие Davi, потому что его цена немного упала。Однако, мы всегда видим нашу社区 support for Sun, с более и более большими mining pools и support from exchanges。Sun must treat great potential for growth among a large number of projects。Я надеюсь, что mining может продолжаться。После всего, Tron имеет mature ecosystem, which will only empower Sun to a great extent。Хороший проект должен быть persistent, and so should Tron and Sun。Это все, что я хочу поделиться, ребята。Спасибо。
Хорошо，Julie，非常感谢你分享。下一个将是 Xia Gong。Я надеюсь, я не произношу тебя wrongly。你现在可以关掉麦克风。
Да, ты меня слышите? Да, хорошо。Я думаю, Sun должен expand its use cases apart from mining, such as gaming and tools that users may need。В моей opinion, current blockchain projects are too profit-driven。The most popular applications are exchanges, which are all about speculation and making money。What if we can come up with things that have actual utility in our daily life? Games and tools are just a few examples, of course。Does anyone have other advice on promoting the use, the price, or just the recognition of Sun? Да, это все。Спасибо。
Хорошо，非常感谢。И спасибо за ваши мысли。Я сейчас буду мигать。下一个人将是 Ali。Я не буду пытаться произносить имя, потому что我不想 произносить его wrongly。
Привет, everyone。Это было выбор голоса, не произношение своего имени。Я Ali。Поэтому я хочу сказать два мысля。Первое, я сейчас думаю, что мы должны остановить mining。И второе, это предложение об apps или decentralized apps на Tron ecosystem。Во-первых, я думаю, что мы выступаем перед собой, чтобы думать, что мы должны остановить mining, чтобы предотвратить инфляцию или просто зарабатывать, чтобы цену上涨。Я думаю, Sun очень-очень молод。Это всего пару месяцев。Это было изучено。Я думаю, многие люди должны иметь возможность знакомиться с этим。Майн Sun и ставить свои资产，来 generate Sun。Я думаю, мы не должны выступать перед собой, чтобы видеть, что Bitcoins или другие токены на буллешарте。Мы только в начале。Второе， Я знаком с Tron пару месяцев，差不多三个月。И мое знакомство с Tron началось с扫描。Sun had a very, very good start。Я думаю, мы должны подумать о базе, чтобы предотвратить deployment of scans on the Sun ecosystem。Это были мои два мысля。Я хотел поделиться этим。
Большое спасибо, большое спасибо, Ali。Это было очень удивительно。Спасибо，谢谢你来。我们会逐一进行。下一个人将是John Chen。你可以直接关掉麦克风，用，比如在 Zoom。
John。
Привет，John。
Моё предложение, это установить механизм покупки, который регулярно уменьшает liquidity， и распределяет дивиденды для持有者。И я думаю, в этом плане，Sun будет превзойдён governance token，到一个token， с большим потенциалом роста и полезной дивиденды。И как ты сказал，总供应量19.900.730， и市值市值 198 million， Я думаю，Sun имеет много возможностей，which are up to the community to use，I think。И это все для меня。Спасибо。
Спасибо，John。Большое спасибо，John。Да，我们现在有132 человек。今天我们在群里。你对Sun的看法，最近的成就，或者你的想法，关于未来的 development。
Хорошо，谢谢，主人。Привет，everyone。Я думаю，我们应该继续 mining，under the condition，that the form and model of it are decided by the community。Sun derives its value from both Justin's endorsement and community consensus。Community plays a crucial role。Currently, many projects have flocked to Tron for development。The number 41 proposal approved by Tron officially activated the Istanbul upgrade on virtual machines。With the proposal passed, Tron virtual machines are now compatible with IS3Ms， so that more DApp developers can migrate to the Tron ecosystem。And as more DApp projects come to Tron，the first thing on their mind is user acquisition and community support。This is exactly where Sun can come into play。The mining continues and users vote with Sun to elect the next mining pool。Projects in order to acquire users and increase their token liquidity，will have to buy more Sun to vote。Gradually，it will be like the voting-based listing on Binance and Huobi， where Sun will become the platform token for the entire Tron ecosystem and held by institutions in large amounts。It is not viable to count on retailers to push up the price。Only institutions have the power to enable greater appreciation。Это мои мысли。
Спасибо，非常感谢你分享。所以，对于刚刚加入我们的人， 你想分享的一切。所以，对，麻烦与我们分享你的想法。
Привет，everyone。Antsky。Я с John довольно давно，一年半。С Sun также с самого начала。Очень excited about Sun。В риску repeating what everyone else has been saying，I think the number one thing is additional use cases for Sun。At the moment，the only way people make returns on Sun is by selling the mined Sun。If there are more use cases，if there are other avenues for Sun，there will be fewer people selling their Sun。The second point I want to make is that，I think we should look at creating pairs with Sun only，not with TRX。So that every other mining pool，every token that we mine must pair with Sun in order to be mined。Это все。Спасибо。
Спасибо，非常感谢你分享。Maria M，你请现在关掉麦克风。
Привет，everyone。Вы меня слышите?
Да，我们能听到你，perfect。
Хорошо，great。Привет。Я хочу говорить о том，为什么有必要和重要，继续做Sun liquidity mining。Я думаю，有 following reasons。Во-первых，我们可以吸引新用户到Sun project，which is important，according to Justin。It's very important to the Tron ecosystem。Второе，with a higher liquidity，it will bring more trading options with different tokens， which will bring another round of boom。That's all we want，right? Because if you join an ecosystem，you want it to be better。And second，and I think it's most important，as Justin himself is very supportive to this project， and we all know，there aren't that many Tron-backed products。And for us，we are small fish。It's hard for us to actually make profit as little investors。And I think Sun is one of the good opportunity for us。So for all that reason，I think，and I hope，we can continue to do liquidity mining with Sun。And right now，I think there are more benefits than limitations。So for all that reason，I think there's no need to stop it right now。So I really hope we can continue mining。So that's all from me。Спасибо。
Хорошо， спасибо，Maria，for sharing your thoughts。下一个，我们将会有一个，Susan。Susan，你现在可以关掉麦克风。И分享你有想法。
Привет，你能听到我吗？
可以听到你，很清楚。
Привет，everyone。Я Susan。Я предлагаю синтетические资产，基于Sun，which means that users can use Sun to lend or borrow USDJ， because it consolidates Sun's value and reduces its market circulation，which naturally curbs selling。So this is a way to power Sun。Это все。Спасибо。
Хорошо， хотя это не было много， но это было очень， очень ценит，что вы пришли сегодня。Lillian，你现在可以关掉麦克风。
Привет，everyone。Лилия здесь。你听到我吗？
Да，很清楚。
У меня простая логика，that is，if you hold Sun，don't curse it。It's really silly to curse something when you hold it，you know， for its price may stop going up，because of your curse。And I am holding Sun right now，and I can never praise it enough，so that everyone knows Sun is excellent。When everyone gets to buy it，its price will go up，and the Sun that I'm holding will be worth more，right? So think carefully about it。I've seen quite a few negative comments regarding Sun on Weibo，金色 finance，and in group chats。But to be honest，I couldn't figure out why。Just don't ruin our profitable opportunities，even if you don't mind losing money。So here is the logic。If no one speaks highly of it，it won't attract any user anyway。So my advice is to be smart。Это все。
Хорошо， это очень интересные мысли от вас。Спасибо，谢谢你来。下一个，我要给这个 stage 的，将是 Leun，用户。你现在可以关掉麦克风， 和你分享想法。Leun。不要害羞。我们都在Sun community，愿意听你的。我们将跳到另一个Tron community user，Joy。你现在可以关掉麦克风，和你分享想法。
Привет。
Привет，你怎么回事？
Я очень рад быть здесь。Я хочу分享我的 opinion about Sun。
当然，继续。
Да，首先和 foremost，I think we need to be clear about what Sun is，and what its use cases will be。If Sun manages to maintain its asset value，it will be immensely valuable even without Tron's power。A token is used for varied purpose in different periods。So when one day Sun is desperately needed by the market，then unleash its potential to power Tron，rather than the other way around。Understanding this is key to deciding whether to continue with Sun mining。So that's my opinion。
Привет。Привет，ребята。Вы меня слышите? Да。Теперь， я думаю， это Matthew，持有者。Я хотел бы，community to continue liquidity mining。Но я также боюсь，whether we should reduce the Sun's supply to elevate the pressure from selling。You know，if you share my concern，we can have discussion。Should we continue to mine? If we continue，we will instantly remain the same or be reduced accordingly。I think this is a very important thing that we must have a，must to，must to talk about this。And we also need to pool our wisdom and efforts to further support the value of Sun。That's my thoughts on Sun's liquidity mining。
Спасибо，非常感谢。Мы определенно рассмотрим ваши мысли，通过你的 opinion， later，after the meeting with the team。Спасибо，你来过。
Спасибо。
Хорошо，我猜Andrew снова举起手。Давайте дать Andrew еще раз шанс。Andrew，你现在可以关掉麦克风。
Привет。Вы меня слышите?
Да，很清楚。但是，yeah，Andrew，只是分享你的想法，伙计。
所以，基本上， 我想说的是，所有的LP liquidity mining from the TRX，JAS，Wink，和USDJ应该被移除。We only should let the LP should be the Sun。Sun should be the LP。Everything must include Sun as the liquidity，instead of TRX，JAS，USDJ，和Wink。Because TRX，JST，USDJ，Wink holders，all these are just dumping。So to only appreciate Sun，you have to be LP with the Sun。This is number one。So number two is that，we have to apply DeFi ASAP as the lend and borrow。Because without DeFi，you cannot move on further，because Sun is useless at the moment。No usage，no tools，nothing。And lastly is that we need，the community to pump together in sense of everybody hold at the same time。Because some people is still dumping，because they are using TRX，JST，USDJ，Wink to mine，so it's free coin to them。So we need the Sun to be LP，and they will hold the Sun，and Sun will pump。So that's all is my idea and comment。
我猜，一切会变得更好，从现在开始。谢谢你今天的想法，Andrew。
Спасибо。
Хорошо，下一个。Давайте дать еще раз шанс Leun用户。Она или он долго举起手，但上一次她，或者他，没能自己关掉麦克风。你现在可以关掉麦克风。Leun用户。Хорошо，有人有点害羞。Ребята，下一个将是Alice。Alice，你现在可以关掉麦克风，分享你的想法。На Sun。
Привет。Привет，你们，你们能听到我吗？
Да，我们可以听到你，很清楚。Спасибо，你来了。
Хорошо。As a member of the community who has been participating since the Genesis mining of Sun， I think that the community needs to distribute rewards in other tokens to all Sun holders， in order to further attract users, traffic，and attention。Meanwhile，I propose to never give Sun as reward，so that the circulation of Sun will not be increased。In addition，I suggest that the longer one holds Sun，the higher the ratio of rewards one can receive。The amount of Sun is held multiplied by the length of time Sun is held。If we distribute rewards this way，we can without speculators，and thus boost enthusiasm of Sun holders， which will drive the community consensus to new heights。Да，这所有。Спасибо。
Спасибо，Alice。非常感谢。与Sun community，和今天来的Sun community members。下一个人将是Tron Swindler。Uh, the next person is gonna be Tron Swindler. Uh, but I guess he didn't connect his microphone. Uh, Tron Swindler, if you want to speak about Sun, share your thoughts, please connect your microphone. I will un, unmute you when you do that. So let's just skip to the well-thought-ih, uh, please unmute yourself.
Hi everyone. Uh, I think most of you know me from Sun IO or Sun community. Uh, just wanna reiterate what a lot of people said about uh, following the path of having Sun as the common denominator in all the LP pools. Uh, and further that thought with having uh, big dollar coins such as uh, Bitcoin and Ethereum to uh, I mean basically when, when the APIs were high for TRX and Win, TRX and JST, I bought uh, JST. I bought Win. If we have, you know, just a few LP pools, high APYs with Bitcoin, Ethereum, these big, you know, big dollar coins, people will have to buy Sun to, to match those. So I think that's uh, you know, a good way of uh, raising the price. Uh, as to, you know, all these people complaining about Shark on the chat, I think that's one of the big advantages that Sun has over the other DeFi projects is that we have Tron, Tron Foundation backing us. Um, so uh, yeah, so I'd, I'd like to see the Sun, Sun being in all the pools. Uh, and nothing, that's my main points. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming today. Uh, we're gonna jump to the next person who is raising their hand. Uh, B-A-N-Y-A-M-I-N-A, you can unmute yourself right now. Bin Yam Min, yep.
Hey, everybody.
Hi there.
First of all, I think mining should be continued. Clearly, this kind of mining cannot be useful anymore. You should manage some kinds of projects are not only based on money. I mean, mining by activities or advertising or everything else that cause mine sign by other activities is the key. If you keep on this kind of mining, the price will be dump and dump. Second of all, assets without incoming cannot stay on this market. Sun for Sun is not the key factor. Sun needs some abilities to encourage people for keeping. Keeping without income is equal to move money from Sun to other assets. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you, thank, thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
And let's jump to the next person. Juwan, Juwan Smile, please unmute yourself. Thank you for waiting. Juwan Smile, you can unmute yourself.
Yep, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep, pretty clear. Thank you for coming.
Okay. You're welcome. Uh, my contribution is um, on the mining. I think it should be stopped. Because if you consider what um, has been happening since people got to know that the mining will be paused for a while, you'll notice that the, there's an increase in the price, if you noticed. Then if it should continue, which I don't support, I'll go with Andrew, which suggested that we should use Sun as the basis of all these LP, which I think is a good idea. Then also another lady suggested there should be incentives for holders, holders of Sun, that if they hold, then they get certain tokens from another, uh, maybe like a launch pool or whatever, a new coin coming into COCO. If you hold Sun, then we give you certain this or certain that. I think these are my suggestions anyways. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for coming today, man. And for now, we don't have anybody raising hand, but like people who just joined us right now, you're always welcome to raise your hand and share your thoughts. Don't be shy. Raise your hand, share your thoughts. And everything that you guys suggested today is gonna be passed to the team and the team is gonna review the recording of today's meeting. Uh, okay, we have one person raising hand, Bazad. I will un, unmute you right now. You can unmute yourself right now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Uh, I think for, yes, I think for Sun future, mining should stop. Uh, we can clearly see uh, the price, the moment the mining end uh, rise up. I think it's better for Sun to mining's end and then mining start when Sun hits around uh, one hundred dollar or more. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing. Yep. Uh, the next person who is raising his hand, David. David, you can unmute yourself right now.
Uh, hi, good morning, everybody.
Hey, how are you doing?
Doing very well. I just wanna say good morning to the United States of America. And uh, that I've heard a lot of really good comments right now from everybody in the community. It's kind of uh, inspiring to see everybody coming together today to uh, voice their opinions and actually be heard by the Sun project. Uh, it's very inspiring. Also, I wanna mention that, you know, although the Sun token started out as a meme coin, uh, I think it has a lot of potential because we have such a large community. It is a very strong Tron community. And I also wanted to voice my opinion on the LP Sun mining. Uh, you know, I think maybe it should be suspended for now until we have a very strong use case for the Sun token. Uh, but when it resumes or if you decide to continue it, it should only be uh, LP Sun token mining, not Win token or BTT or anything. It should, it should really only be the, the Sun versus LP token for mining, uh, in my opinion. Um, and then also I just wanted to give a shout out to the GTS blockchain global community and to let you, the Sun project people know that if you guys need any help in communications about the project, please reach out to uh, the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, for coming today. Thank you, David. Uh, the next person that we're gonna unmute is Lenovo. Lenovo, you can unmute yourself and share your thoughts.
Uh, hello, sir. How are you doing? Can you hear my vo, can you hear my voice?
Yep, yeah, I can hear your voice pretty clear.
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I wanna talking about uh, Tron and Sun project. Uh, we believe your projects, but you know, Tron price uh, never change and Sun token price uh, dumping every day. But we see the uh, potential in Sun token when it start sixty, sixty-five bucks, you know? Uh, what, what you thinking about in future Sun price? Is a hundred dollars or thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars? Uh, we just wanna make you rich, man. Just say. Thank you so much.
I understand that. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing today. And yes, we have another Amber. Amber, I will unmute yourself right now.
Hey guys, can you hear me?
Pretty loud and clear. Thank you for coming.
I mean, I hear a lot of people, oh yeah, thanks for having me here. I hear a lot of people talk about mining and I just wanna voice my opinions on to keep on mining or not. I personally believe that mining should go on, but we do need to adapt to a changing market and trends. Because like, on one hand, mining revives the market and encourages existing users to circulate their tokens, which, you know, helps Suns user, user base. But on the other hand, the market is, is like full of um, can I call it like scammy projects? But we can't rule out the possibility that mining may eventually survive and become, how to describe it? Kind of like the Amazon in the crypto sector. You know what I mean? Like you have all these choices, but then you have to choose. It's all like, you have to be intelligent about your choices. So yeah, it's hard to tell. So my, what I'm trying to say like, as we run with mining, adapt to the changing market, the market will probably buy the idea of mining or embrace this alternative. That's just like my thoughts. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming by. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. And everybody, everybody who is joining us right now, all, everybody is welcome to raise their hand to share their thoughts. It doesn't need to be really big thoughts, just your opinion about the, how Sun project was doing recently. What do you think? What you accept, what you don't. Everybody is welcome to raise their hand. Okay, we have Amber back with a few thoughts, I guess. Amber, you can unmute yourself right now.
Hi, I have another, if you guys don't mind, but I have like other thoughts, if you guys don't mind.
Please go ahead.
I mean, it's, it's more like on the Tron ecosystem other than just Sun. Is that okay?
Yep, sure.
Like my point is, like, as a Tron ecosystem kind of goes forward and prospered, it might benefit both Sun, Tron and Sun, the two could work together more closely. For example, right? Uh, JST is playing increasingly critical role in many Tron projects like in stablecoins or the newly launched Justlink. And is, so there are like a lot more usage cases here. I'm pretty, I personally, I'm actually quite confident that Sun will have a far brighter and better future and improved community governance if, let's say like, everything interacts more closely together. You know what I mean?
Yep, totally understand.
So like if community governance interacts more closely with other projects in the Tron ecosystem, this can actually push Sun forward, right?
That's interesting.
I mean, it's just a thought. It's just a thought. Thanks for, for letting me speak again. Very happy about that. Thanks.
Uh, we have Tron Swindler who was raising his hand for a while right now. But you are not connected, you didn't connect your mic right now. So if you can connect your mic, you will definitely have a chance to speak and share your thoughts today. Everybody else is welcome also to raise their hands right now, share everything that you have in mind. Don't be shy, like, nothing, like, nothing big is expected, not, nothing, like, nobody needs to have a big speech. Just share your thoughts. What do you think about the development of Sun before and what are you expecting from it in the future? Alright, we have, we have another person raising his hand.
Hi, it's me again.
Yep.
Yeah. I just, I mean, for the future, I, I really see Sun as being like a bank, you know? Instead of getting eight percent interest from your bank, you know? Institutional money can put their, their money with Sun and, you know, get ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent. This is something that people will, will love, you know? Just like, uh, it's a new way of storing your money. And I, I really see as, you know, future, future case will have, you know, lending, we can do margin trading with Sun. We can do so many things, bank related. And, you know, we want people to store their, their money, the value of money into Sun. I think that's, should be the ultimate goal. Yeah, but that's it.
Thank you.
I think that's, I think that's really important to, to, to realize, you know? Like now we're, we're, you, you call it staking, but maybe in the future, this is, this is new, it's now called banking. It's not staking anymore. It's banking.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for this stuff. Thank you for the thought. Team is definitely gonna review that and see what we can do with that. Thank you so much. Uh, we have a few people raising their hand, Hassan and Tron Swindler. But like, your microphones are not connected, so I'm not able to unmute you guys. If you can connect your microphone, you will be able to share your thoughts. And everybody else is like, who's willing to speak up, they want to tell us anything, what they think about Sun. Welcome to raise their hand. We still have uh, forty-five minutes of this call. Okay, we have a user who wants to share their thoughts. Chop, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, hi everybody. Uh, I'm thinking though, um, with the Sun, we can keep the mining going, keep the staking going currently. But we go, we can turn the gears to more like a launchpad, similar to what Binance does and with our Tron ecosystem, smart coins are within that route. But, but with that, I believe we're gonna need some serious vetting with the community, only doubt. So we gotta need a peer review to make sure we not just putting rug pools out there, you know? Pumping dumps out there, but actually help the community review different doubts and allow that to be a launchpad for them. You know, I think that might go. But furthermore, once all the Sun tokens are mine, once the total supply is mine, I believe that we're gonna have to uh, look farther into like just staking in that sense. That hard staking of the coins to keep it viable. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for expressing your thoughts today. Everybody else, everybody else who is willing to express their ideas, welcome to raise their hand and share. I told Lenovo user was raising his hand for the second time. Don't be shy. You can share any thought that you have right now and/or you developed during this call. So anytime if users already had an opportunity to speak up, but they want to add something else, they also welcome to do that. So anytime you raise your hand and I will unmute you and the, the community is gonna listen to what you think. And yeah, for everybody who just joined us, uh, well, you're welcome to raise your hand on Zoom. And I will see that, I will, yeah, we have Lenovo back. Let's listen to.
Hello, hello Justin again. Uh, I wanna say, uh, I watched your video on YouTube. Uh, you say we try to turn this sense to run. When you gonna try that? Okay, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, thank you. But Justin is not here today with us. But yeah, any, anything you want to add, everything, any thought that you have is valuable. Thank you. Thank you for speaking up again. Alright, we have five more users in the waiting room. Let's wait for them to get inside and see what they want to share with us. Everybody who has just jumped inside this group chat from the waiting room is welcome to raise their hand and share their thoughts on Sun. If you raise your hand, you will have an opportunity to share with the whole community your thoughts on the Sun development before or like what do you think is gonna be the next step for Sun? What do you think is the most like valuable thing that Sun is holding in itself? What do you want to see from the Tron community or the Tron product itself in the, on, on the Sun product in the future? Alright, let's have well one.
Sorry, I'm back again. I just wanna reiterate about uh, about Bitcoin, you know? This, uh, we're in the middle of a uh, uh, Bitcoin boom right now and a lot of new Bitcoin users. And I think just, it would be great if we had, you know, a uh, Sun Bitcoin pool uh, where people could store their Bitcoin and make extra money. And then in the meanwhile, they'll, they'll end up having to buy Sun to match uh, with their Bitcoin. So I mean, I think we should take advantage of the bull run that we're in right now and uh, have, have that as uh, LP pairs as well as Ethereum. Especially with uh, you know, the uh, Uniswap, people don't know what's going on, they stopped it. So these people are looking for places to put their money. And I think Sun would be a great platform for that. Where, you know, all these projects are getting the rug pulled. Uh, we know that our project is, you know, uh, being run by Tron Foundation, so we don't, we don't have that issue. So I think we, we really need to take advantage of that.
Alright, thank, thank you for sharing one more thought with us. That was really appreciated. Thank you. Uh, we have Maria M back again. Let's listen to what she has to share with us right now.
Oh, hi everyone. Um, well, I see a lot of people in the chat talking about like, there is not enough use with Sun. So for us, because we already believe in Sun and we all know for blockchain, it's important. So for us, because we already believe in Sun and we all know for blockchain, it's important to build consensus. Um, so I feel like why not to have like more incentive or like referral program with Sun? We can make it more useful. And, um, I understand a lot of people care about price, but I think only when more people know about Sun and wanted to use Sun or want to talk about Sun in the entire blockchain world, um, that's the way for Sun to actually grow to even bigger than a Minpun. And, uh, at the end, once there is more fun and use to the token, I'm sure there will be more people wanting to join. Um, so that's just my two cents.
Thank you, thank you for adding to the thoughts that you had before. Uh, we have Ali. Uh, Ali, you can unmute yourself right now and tell us what you have to say.
Hello again. Hey. Um, it was very enlightening to listen to other folks saying their ideas. Uh, I just had an idea. Uh, as I said before, that Tron and Sun and the whole ecosystem around it is growing at a really, really fast pace and it's just now and then that a new project, a new name, a new token or something else pops up. I think the, hmm, the speed and pace of development has outpaced and outran, uh, the education part. For example, you have to be very, very, very savvy to, uh, realize and know all of these projects that just uh, launched like Just Link, Just Swap, USDJ, there are many names. I think there should be more efforts and more concentration on educating people. And that's, I think, the end goal, that the whole ecosystem, the whole token prices and value and circulation and trading volume will go up. I think this is necessary and, um, I believe that Tron is built on the same idea to fuel the media and entertainment industry. That was my idea.
Thank you, thank you for sharing. Yeah, definitely, education is really important part on the whole blockchains, like in the industry right now. This is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for sharing your thoughts, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thanks.
Alright, we have another user, like I want to tell to everybody who just joined us from the waiting room that if you want to say something or you have any ideas expressed towards Sun, you're always welcome to raise your hand. And you will have an opportunity to speak and share everything that you have on your mind with the people who came and joined us today. The next person is gonna be Lawless, please, uh, you can unmute yourself right now and share your thoughts with us. Lawless, you are unmuted right now and you can start sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you for stopping by. I guess you have some problems with the microphone that would be, I, you can raise, you can fix your problems with your mic. Uh, and then raise your hand again and I will give you a chance to, to share your thoughts with the community. I'll mute you right now, for now. Uh, then we have another person, Amit. Amit, you can unmute yourself and share your thoughts with us.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, so I'm from Canada, hello everyone. Uh, so I just wanted to bring up a point that, uh, we have a lot of token in Tron, uh, you know, economy, right? And each has its own use cases. I know we had Just and Just has very unique, uh, usage for Oracle and Just Swap and other things, right? So why not make Sun the numero uno coin for all the miscellaneous activity that happens on Tron network? That will increase its maybe value. And since it's, it's low in volume, its price will also reflect the same if there is a utility for that, right? Rather than having multiple coins for, uh, different purposes. Instead have just one coin, uh, for all the activities and just Tron as the basis for all the activity that happens on Tron network, rather than having multiple, uh, tokens on Tron network.
Alright, that's, that's a really nice thought, thank you for sharing that. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think I'm good.
Thank you, thank you for stopping by. Uh, the next user that we have, uh, in our queue is Tendorian. You can unmute yourself right now, thank you for waiting.
Hey, thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yep, pretty loud and clear.
Okay, first of all, my opinion is we should continue mining Sun like was planned because we would only disappoint people if we, yeah, just stop it. If we could get all liquidity pools in Sun and bigger cap coins like Bitcoin and Ethereum, this would cause more Sun to be locked up and stimulate the price upwards. And with the current boom, attract a lot more users to Tron, win-win situation like what you also was explaining to us. Further, I think to improve the use case of Sun, we should have some, some sort of a lending product with Sun as a base coin or where, where it will be used as a, as a fee. Uh, from that point of view, we could even, even introduce some kind of a burning mechanism in the future for, for Sun. And this, this was my input, thank you.
Thank you, thank, thank you for sharing these thoughts, really appreciate it. Thank you for stopping by. Uh, I guess we're gonna give another chance to Lawless, I think he probably fixed his mic problems, let's see. Hey, can you hear me? Yep, we can hear you now. Okay. Well, first off, I think we should keep the liquidity mining going because for decentralized exchanges, that's important. And another use case for Sun is make it a certificate of deposit, kind of like you store your money in a bank, gain interest. Do that with, uh, Sun and delegate a million Sun tokens just for this purpose. And then, uh, with the certificate of deposit, you could time lock. Uh, the Sun for periods of time, you'll be rewarded based on the amount and time. But then if you un, unstake your tokens or whatever, then it'll be a penalty. So it's incentivize people to give your tokens locked up. Alright, alright, thank you Lawless, thank you for, for, for sharing your thoughts today. Uh, and everybody else who I just landed inside from the waiting room, everybody should know that you can just raise your hand. And if you want to tell us something about Tron, about Sun ecosystem, about the Sun development, Sun, what you can see for the Sun future, what you can advise for the Sun team to do with Sun token, you always welcome to share your thoughts. And we have a user named Burak. You can unmute yourself right now. Alright, okay. Burak, you can just raise your hand one more time and I will unmute you if you want to, to share your thoughts. Alright, here we go.
Hello.
Hey, how are you doing?
Uh, good evening from Istanbul.
Thank you.
I think mining should go on and myself, eh, I've been with Tron since the beginning. And I'm holding BTTV, just everything that I can hold in Tron ecosystem. And I've been, I have been inviting people, teaching people about Tron ecosystem. And I made people, um, participate in this Sun mining a lot. And I still believe this should go on. And maybe like others said, Bitcoin or Ethereum, some other stuff should be added to gain more interest. And, but for the end, I think Justin Sun has, must have an idea what will be the use case at the end. I trust him. I don't know, what it is for the Sun, I mean, for the end. Thank you for having me.
Thank you Burak for sharing your thoughts today, thank you so much. And the next person that we have raising his hand, Hassan. Uh, you can unmute yourself right now, thank you for coming.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing?
How are you?
Good, good, thank you.
Uh, hello, hello, I, uh, and have a good time. Uh, I'm Iranian, uh, we really like your system and TRX, your Sun. Uh, but up, but come up with an idea to raise the price. Uh, I don't know, uh, just keeping your hold. Thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you for sharing, thank you for sharing, thank you for coming today.
Messer.
Uh, if you, Hassan, if you have any other thoughts, you can raise your hand one more time and I will unmute you. And everybody who just joined us, one more time, tell them to everybody if you want to say something, if you want to share your thoughts, just raise your hand and you will have a chance to talk with the whole Sun community and all the people that we have today. Share your thoughts and everything that you have to about Sun. For the meeting, we have thirty more minutes and don't waste the chance to tell us what you want, what you expect, what you expect in the future of the Sun ecosystem and Sun community. We have a new user who is raising his hand, M. Uh, you can unmute yourself right now and share your thoughts with us.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep, pretty loud and clear, thank you, thank you for coming.
Yeah, no, I just, uh, yeah, I've just joined, um, for the last fifteen, twenty minutes. I was just thinking, um, has it been already addressed in terms of what we do with the, uh, good ideas that everyone's been raising here? And secondly, um, it, going forward, it might be wise to have a avenue or a, uh, area, um, that we can raise ideas and people can vote on. So, uh, it's a community-led initiative and, um, the highest voted, um, idea gets promoted. Or I guess there must be some sort of, um, idea for, um, having a consensus, consensus like we do in the TRX ecosystem.
Yeah, there were a few users sharing their thoughts, thank you for, thank you for also saying it to us, repeating that, like that's gonna be taken into consideration. Thank you for stopping by and sharing your thoughts. Uh, we have Ali, who is, he's, he's coming back for some additional thoughts, I guess. You can unmute yourself.
Uh, hello again. Uh, designed thoughts and ideas? I had some, uh, propositions that I just thought I can get an answer from you. Uh, we are, uh, building some businesses and apps on the Tron ecosystem. Uh, are there any ways to, uh, develop collaborations and partnerships and exchange ideas or divide roles and responsibilities in developing the ecosystem? Because we are doing that. And who can I contact? Who can I be in contact with?
Oh, that depends like which ecosystem are we, you're talking right now, is this Sun ecosystem or is more of a Tron in general?
First Tron, then Sun.
I thought the Tron ecosystem, you can definitely, uh, share your thoughts, share your ideas on the service at tron.network. Email, that's like how our community started growing on the Tron. And for Sun, you can also go to our website and see like the links and the emails that you can contact, definitely. The team is gonna take anything in consideration, so don't be shy, just send out, send us an email and we will take, go, we'll go through that. You know, exchange our, and talk a little bit more one by one, one to one, like about your thoughts, what you're building, what you're doing in the ecosystem.
Excellent, so, uh, the email on the websites is the right address to get to, yeah?
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very.
Also, you can DM the, uh, admins in the Telegram group chat, they will also help you with any, any thoughts.
I don't have the address, can you tell it?
Uh, the address for the, for the, like the email address?
No, no, the Telegram group.
Yeah, you just, you just go to the official Sun Telegram group chat and then see who is an admin and then add admin. And yeah, you can start talking with them about everything that you have.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, can I have your name please? Because I didn't get it.
Uh, for the decentralized community, it was, it's not really appropriate, you know, to open up a real name, so like, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see. I thought, I thought at first you introduced yourself and I didn't catch it. That's okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you Ali for coming and speaking up again.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a few more people just joined and I want to repeat them that everybody is welcome to raise their hand, we only have twenty-five more minutes for this call. And if you have anything you want to share with us, with the, everybody who is supporting Sun over here, everybody who is in our ecosystem, just raise your hand and tell us what you think. Anything from the what do you think about the Sun that you've done before? Or anything that you want to share with us on the thoughts, what the future development should be. Uh, we have a username sup sup, uh, you can unmute yourself right now and share with us your ideas.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, pretty loud and clear, thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, some people think, uh, the Sun is pre-coin. They mining with their Tron, they have a lot of Tron and they mining Sun and every day they're sold in market. So I think we should keep, uh, finish the mining and then the Sun value is more higher than before. For example, you know the Uniswap, the Uniswap, the, they keep the mining and the price is more higher than before. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for not being shy and sharing everything to us with the Sun community today. Thank you so much for stopping.
Thank you.
And we have another user who is raising their hand, Sohan. Sohan, you can unmute yourself right now and share what you think. S O H A N, Sohan, okay. If you want to say something, you can just raise your hand again and share your thoughts with us. Alright, let's wait for a while, for a bit and see if anybody else want to share their thoughts. Just raise your hand and tell us what you think. We have twenty minutes left for this call, so just raise your hand and if you want to say something, if you want to share something with the Sun community, with us, with the team, Sun team, you're always welcome to raise your hand and share your thoughts. Alright, we can wait for a few minutes, if there is not gonna be anybody raising their hand, I guess we're gonna just finish this call. But it's not gonna be, it's, it's the first one, but it's not gonna be the last one, we're gonna organize more of those. Everything that you guys told us today is gonna be, is, is recorded and everything is gonna be shared with the team of the internal discussion on the future development, what we need to do, what we need to take in consideration. Okay, we have a user Vivek. Uh, you can unmute yourself and share what you think.
Hi, good evening, this is Vivek from Singapore.
Hi there.
Hi, so, uh, one of the ideas which I was thinking was that why can't we have a lock-in period for Sun? Who, the freshly mined or the minted Suns? Right? So this can control the indiscriminate selling which has happened. So most of the coins which are typically mined, they have a lock-in period. So, uh, this is another thought which I was having.
Alright, that's gonna, consideration, thank you for sharing that. The team is gonna take it to the meeting, everybody, every, every, all of your thoughts is gonna be discussed in the internal meeting. Thank you, thank you for sharing. Uh, we have Amber back to us, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, since not a lot of people are really talking right now, I wanna take up an opportunity to speak again, if you guys don't mind.
Sure.
Oh, haha, I mean, after hearing so many people, community members' thoughts, I feel like people have like different opinions and different suggestions and they're like, they want more creative measures for the, for, um, for Sun. I mean, there's so many different opinions and suggestions. I personally think we, we should probably improve the voting mechanism. Oh, we've already had a few elections, right? I think, uh, was it two or three?
We had two from, yeah.
Two, two, right? I mean, I think it's great, but I do. Two, two, right? I mean, I think it's great, but I do think that there is a lot to be improved with it. Like, it's not very interactive right now. I mean, I mean, if it's a little bit more interactive, I think it could, it can ensure a more fair system for every Sun holder to vote on things like community proposals or adding features, things like um more staking and mining, lending even, or yeah, I mean, if you could bring it to the team, that'd be really great to discuss, because I do think with, since like Sun is supposed to be a community governance project.
So it's like a more. More like the Tron blockchain has the proposal system, you mean, right? Like everybody an opportunity to propose something and then other community members can just uh, you know, vote on that.
Yeah, like a little bit more interactive, like um. I'm not, I mean, I, I haven't really thought out. I really, I didn't bulk out the details yet, but it's just a good thought that after hearing everybody else talk and everyone's suggestions and what they not just expect, but what they want to see. So I was like, oh, perhaps like in order to kind of hear the voices even more. I know Sun's very new right now. So there's like a lot of a lot of um time and room for growth. But like, if we can improve like a voting system, the community, community will have more say.
I see, I see your point. Yeah.
I understand it. It's a gradual process. It's not, I'm not, I, I'm sure nobody is expecting it to happen next week or anything. But like eventually, probably update the community with details and such. I mean, it's just just something that came up and I noticed that not a lot of people are really talking. Like, oh, I might as well speak up, if you guys don't mind.
Don't worry. So always welcome to speak up again if you have any new thoughts today.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for letting me talk again. I'll retreat now.
Thank you, thank you for sharing your thoughts. And we have Andrew L. back again. Uh, Andrew, you can unmute yourself and share everything that you probably developed new thoughts during this meeting.
Yeah, hi. Uh, just one more thought, sir. The Sundao community now is uh six hundred Sun to join, to be eligible to be in the group. I think that you should add in a platinum or gold or even diamond or even more elite uh category, such as one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand Sun holders. Because the higher the holders, the more valuable the opinion and more concentrated is their opinion towards the Sun community. Rather than the hundred Sun holders commenting and talking things that doesn't benefit the whole community, because they only hold hundred. So their weightage is not much in the community. And just now Amber mentioned that uh you can vote. So I think after this meeting of the English and the Chinese version, you should filter out feel valuable opinions for the community to vote.
Yep, definitely gonna do that.
Yeah, so uh my opinion is you have to start another group chat, which is two thousand, three thousand, four thousand Sun holders instead of the six hundred. Because these six hundred can buy and sell immediately and they can join the group. So you have to do weekly, timely measurement and update about their stacking and their holding of the Sun.
Alright.
So this is my opinion.
Yeah, that's a pretty good opinion, like diversify the whole community into more like users who hold more Sun. Yep. Definitely gonna take this in consideration. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Uh, we have another user who is raising hand, Jitendra. You can unmute yourself.
Hey, so uh, so as uh Amber and uh uh the person, he was just speaking, he said like uh we should take community voting. So can we do something similar like we do with Tron? For the voting and then only we propose something like uh, shall we stop the mining or not ma, non-stop the mining? So that it can, uh, if somebody has to vote and they will get the reward, then uh they will acquire more Sun and they will not, they will stop selling.
Hmm. Alright, yep, it's, we already had this thought. Yeah, thank you for confirming that, that there's other people in our community who is thinking this way. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, we, like, just to remind everybody, we only have fifteen minutes left. So everybody who just joined this call can just raise their hand and if they have something to share with us, with the Sun community and with the Sun team, please just raise your hand and I will unmute you and you will have a chance to tell us what you think. Uh, the next user is IS. IS, you can unmute yourself and share everything that you have in your mind.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet everyone virtually.
Hmm.
Uh, I have uh just two suggestions. The first is that if mining is uh Euro continued, at that point in time, people who have been uh, you know, been involved with Sun project since the beginning, uh, they should be rewarded more. Uh, in terms of, you know, there should be a time uh bound uh importance also be, should be given to people who uh, you know, stake Sun or that should be one parameter, because that would reward actual holders of Sun.
Alright.
Probably just the amount of Sun that I bring to the table. Because we are looking for people who would stick with the project for the long term. And the second suggestion is to maybe, you know, uh, put a, put a time limit or put the, the uh Sun uh tokens that have been mined in a, in a you know, they should be, they should not be even immediately for people to encash it.
Hmm.
Uh, there should be some delay, uh, you know? Because what we've seen till now is that people just are, they are selling uh the tokens and the price crashes.
Hmm. Okay, your thought is really clear.
These are the two points that I wanted to share with everyone. That's all.
Thank you, thank you. Uh,
Thank you so much.
We appreciate for you coming today and sharing your thoughts. Thank you so much. Uh, we have next user, whose name is Sun Texas. Uh, you can unmute yourself right now and share your thoughts.
Hey, what's up, everyone? I'm from Texas.
Hey there. Hi to Texas.
Well, question for Sun and Justlink, what the benefit for both of them? So I don't understand why Justlink needs Sun and why Sun need Justlink?
Yeah, so basically, it's not like discussion right now. It's more like if you have any thoughts on the future development of Sun, you can share it with us. If you have any ideas, you're welcome to do it right now.
Oh, uh, I want to put an idea, uh, keep mining for Sun, just Sun mining Sun. That's all I need.
Okay, okay. You've been heard, you've been heard. Everything, like, everything is gonna be delivered to the team. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, that's be all. I'm just been here late, so I don't uh hear the previous conversation, so.
Alright, hi to Texas again. Thank you for stopping by.
Bye-bye.
Uh, alright, and we had a few users that just joined us right now. Just want to tell you, there is only twelve minutes left for this call. Like, if you still have anything to add, if you have any thoughts, you're welcome to raise your hand in the Zoom and I will give you a chance to tell us what you think. Everybody who has any ideas, any thoughts, what they think Sun teams need to improve with the product, what other features should be added to the product. Every, every, everybody's voice is really, really appreciated. And we have, we have IS back to us. Let's see what he have to add right now. You can unmute yourself.
Thanks. Um, in terms of, um, uh, this is a question that I wanted to ask. Uh, is there a timeline wherein, you know, uh, uh, we are developing smart contracts like Ave or like uh Compound? Or other um, you know, DeFi communities that are working on different uh angles of it, it, you know, speaking very, if, if I, if I was a purist, I wouldn't call any of uh that being decentralized finance, but let's just, you know, whatever is going on in the decentralized finance space right now. Um, uh, are there teams that are working on building uh, you know, pro, uh, pools that, that can offer uh those things? Just a question.
Yeah, I mean, definitely. If you, if you have an idea to opening uh another pool or anything, you can contact us via Telegram or via email and tell us like what are your thoughts about that? So like, just to remind everybody, it's more like suggestions, not the quest Q and A session today.
Pardon me. I am so sorry for that.
No worries, no worries, no worries. Always welcome. Like, if you have any thoughts like this, if you have any questions to the Sun, to the Tron ecosystem or everything, like all the contact information are available on the websites. So if you have any questions like towards these ones, and it's a pretty good question though, you can contact us by email.
Sounds good. I'll do that. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for coming. Uh, we have Matthew raising his hand, please. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, sure. Hey, guys, I have two proposals for Sun community. Uh, my first proposal is like maybe Sun can consider to resume the Sun token airdrop, because it's really a good way to enlarge token holders. And the second proposal is like uh Sun, we can push Sun to be listed on many big, big exchanges like Binance and other exchanges to add its liquidity. I think maybe these two ways can help Sun be much stronger. That's it.
Yeah, Sun, basically, Sun will already listed on a lot of top exchanges. But yeah, thank you for, for sharing your thoughts. Uh, we'll try to get it listed on more and more exchanges in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Hassan is raising his hand one more time. Let's see what he has to add to what he was in sharing with us before. Uh, you can unmute yourself, Hassan, if you have anything to add. And for everybody, we only have eight minutes left for this call. If you have anything to add, Hassan, you can unmute yourself if you want right now. Yep, alright.
Hi again.
Hi there.
Hello. Uh, I think for uh the development of the whole system, uh, please uh remove the fake token and think about the, the shark.
Master. Alright, thank you.
Master, please remove uh the fake token.
Uh, sorry, can you, you, you just liked a little bit what, what, what I've been saying one more time, if you don't mind? Alright, uh, let's just keep the pace, because we only have seven minutes left. Uh, Sohan, you can unmute yourself. Tell us what you want to say.
Yes, sir. You hear about Shai Dify. What about us?
We are not talking about anything else but Sun today. Sorry for that.
Please do something for us. We're helpless.
Alright, uh, I mean, anything else that you want to talk about except Sun, you can contact the emails on the official website. So yeah, you can do that. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Ali, we have a username, Ali, who can unmute himself right now and share his thoughts. Ali, if you want to add something, if you want to share your thoughts with us, you're welcome to unmute yourself right now.
Hi, everyone.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Thank you for this online meeting. We are here for future of Sun community.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay. I think whatever makes the token valuable first is its number and then difficult in mining.
Hmm.
And also smart contracts. Uh, few months ago, Justin said that the Sun is future Bitcoin in Tron network. But all of us know that the mining of Bitcoin was last for more than ten years and still continue. Therefore, my suggestion is stop the mining, no? And instead of mining, work on a smart contracts for introducing this token to more communities. And after its pumping, we can decide for mining continuation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ali. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Really much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Then, guys, we only have five minutes left. We're gonna just listen to the last two people that are raising their hand today. Runners, you can unmute yourself right now and share everything that you want to say. Runners, you can unmute yourself right now.
Hello.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good, how are you guys? Um, yeah, uh, I think you guys should be looking into um BTT liquidity pools and Wink liquidity pools and focusing on the projects that are doing really well right now. And maybe try not to think about or forgetting about some of the projects that maybe we've been scammed on, you know?
Yeah, total, total understand your point, total understand your point. Do you have anything else you want to share with us?
Um. Uh, there was one other thing, but I'm forgetting it now. Um. Uh, yeah, hopefully we can get liquidity pools. I think we already have them. And then I'm sure we'll uh be uh launching the mining pools again in the future, like people are talking about it um being over. It's more like a pause. I think we should think of it more like a pause. And then, yeah, focus on liquidity pools that have projects that are doing well, like Wink and um Delive and um, maybe other dApps on the Tron ecosystem that are doing well at the current time.
Hmm. Alright, thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for, for, really, really appreciate that you shared this with us.
Thank you.
Yep. And the last one for today, just want to remind everybody, it's not it's not the last one, meaning that we're gonna have in our Sun community. We're gonna have those more. It's just the first one. We're gonna try it out. We're gonna see what thoughts the real community has to say about the Sun. So because of the time limit, we're gonna listen to our last person today, Mills. Please uh unmute yourself and yeah, just share your thoughts with us.
Yeah, hello, everybody. Yeah, I'm kinda, I wanna ask, uh, I have a Tron link um accounts, those unrelated, but I keep on getting um some of the tokens um popping up with um amount in it, let's say. Though I didn't add them into it, it keep on giving me some, let's say, half over fifty dollars, ten dollars. So I just wanna know, what does it happen? What does, I mean, how does that happen? Is it normal?
Uh, yeah, Mills, thank you for coming, for coming today. I guess like this question is more for the Tron Link team. Like today, we're talking about Sun, like Tron.
The Sun, Sun. Okay, yeah, okay, sure, there. I have have Sun. I guess I started the um to do um the mining. I think it's over. When I going to do another pool for us?
Hmm. Alright, I mean, like definitely in the future, something is gonna come up and we'll definitely keep you updated on everything that is doing, being in the development. Like, as you thought, really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for sharing it. Uh, this, this, take it into consideration. Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, guys, because of the time limit we have, I guess we like, I'm just gonna thank you, everybody, for joining our first Sun conference. Your opinions will be important preference to guys on future development. This is the end of today's conference, uh, but please stay tuned for more updates on the Sun Twitter, Telegram. And I guess we're gonna see you next time, everybody. Really, thank you for coming today. Really appreciate a lot of big thoughts. A lot of people share their information about like what they, what we need to do, their suggestions. Thank you, everybody, for stopping by. The call is gonna be ended right now. And I guess I'll see you next time. Thank you. Thank you for coming, everybody.